Okay, I see. There we go. All right. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the administrative conference on Friday, May 23rd, 2014. City council meeting Tuesday, May 27th, 2014. Dale?
Yes, sir.
You don't look like the mayor. You don't talk like the mayor. Can you act in his capacity?
Well, Mr. Chairman-
A watch and recognition.
Pending to the mayor's arrival, we have none at this time.
Okay. City council members, any communications?
Mr. C E O, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I just want to get a little update on silent waste public education.
Mm-hmm.
I know when we passed the amendment, there was some discussion that we would properly do some door hangers or maybe some P S As or something like that. And I believe we're still looking at a July 1st start date.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any updating information on that?
As a matter of fact, Mr. Harris and his guys are working on all the details, but it will include some door hangers. It will include the Rolf and Street Court Green. It will include some other things that the department's working on. We expect to sit down with the mayor, you know, between this weekend and next and probably have a report to the council by the next weekend, but the effective date is still targeted to be July 1st.
Sounds great. I just would like to add, since I was up there, I have had a couple contractors call me to ask me about that date. So at a minimum, if we could at least do a press announcement or something, kind of now so to get that in everybody's mind, because I've had already people call me specifically on which is the start date of the new thing about the backdoor pickup and all the rest.
Okay. I believe I see Mr. Harris's hand in the back. Dale, if you don't mind. Let me see what he has to share first, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if it is indeed.
Mr. Harris is going to advise that the July 1st date, we're actually looking at mid-July, July 14th. So, but we will get some press out.
But you mean, just to at least get the ball rolling, I've already had some calls. So that's why I said, thank you.
We will take care of that.
Councilor Shine?
Yes.
I was a bit passive, but I had someone to call and reference the pickups being made on a Saturday. Did can we? Does anybody know anything about that?
Dale, okay.
Saturday pickups. I had a constituent to call me yesterday. They were a bit upset because they weren't informed that there was a Saturday pickup. Felt like the-
That was recently or not in just a holiday stand?
For recycling?
Recycling or for garbage?
Just regular garbage. And I had no knowledge of it and so.
We had some crews out this weekend picking up limbs. I'm not sure if it was regular garbage, but sometimes if they run, if they run over on a Friday, they'll pick it up the next day.
Okay.
But, but it-
But it's not a change in our program, right?
The dates are not changing. I mean, it's from Monday through Friday.
Pickup dates should still be the same.
Right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we're going to come back to you. I would want to get what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, I will go ahead and just wrap up all of my communications in one here for the sake of time. Just had the opportunity to come back today from the announcement of yet another new company coming to Shreveport. As you all know, there's been an item on your agenda for the last several weeks involving amendment to the lease of the old Beardco facility. Steve Schoonover, along with his wife are the principals of the effort that was announced today. It represents, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the preservation of 109 jobs that's already in existence at that operation, and the addition of 357 additional jobs, averaging about $49,000 per year. They are very much welcomed with specific reference to the item that is on the council's agenda regarding the amendment to the lease. Our request, and I know you all received an email from us over the weekend indicating that the initial request was going to be for withdrawal, we're going to ask that if the council will be agreeable, that instead of withdrawing that, we'd like to have it tabled so that it will be still available for us as a vehicle that can be utilized without the need for additional advertising. That would be able to save us at least up to six weeks if in the event there does end up being a scenario pursued that would in fact call for a lease amendment. But the good news is 17-plus million dollars, an investment that will be coming from the state, almost an additional $8 million that will be coming from Mr. Schoonover. As I said, just a smidgen under 500 jobs that we will see within the next 15 to 24 months. And to quote Mr. Schoonover when asked about the ultimate intentions of his operations there, he mentioned that when he opened one of his operations, you all know that he is the founding partner of both Fiber Bond and Selexion, he said when one of those companies, I believe it was Fiber Bond, came to the area, he promised 100 jobs, they're now over 700. And so I told him I wouldn't hold him to a factor of seven, but we wouldn't mind if that was his objective. And if so, and we know that there will be in addition to those almost 500, a few thousand that may come as well. So more good news. The fact that Scott Martinez has the North Louisiana Economic Partnership reminded everyone, since January, there's been 1,700 job announcements in Northwest Louisiana in particular, and we're hoping that we'll see some more to come before it's all said and over. And with that, Mr. Vice Chairman, I turn it back over to you.
Jeff, are you in charge?
Oh, I suppose I am. I apologize. Are there any other communications? If not, then we will call on Ms. Farnell, property standard report, or is that?
I don't know if anybody has. I don't.
Any, I guess these are mostly for tomorrow, but for revenue collection plan?
We will have it on tomorrow.
Yeah, and then Ms. Scott, I believe did email everybody, the Sherdy Bond forfeiture report.
She did.
If anybody didn't get that, let us know. And-
Okay.
Are we due for a master plan committee report tomorrow as well?
Next week.
The second week. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Joe, back to you.
Thank you, Jeff. Ms. Farnell? Have we passed Ms. Farnell?
Yes, sir.
Is Ms. Farnell here?
She's outside the chamber at the moment, Mr. Shine.
Okay, could you tell her to come in one minute? I just got a little something I need to mention to her. I've been getting some complaints about some people with some horses over in Hollywood Heights, and I know this probably didn't come under yours' direction, but would you shoot that to the, what is it, zoning MPC?
I already have.
You have?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I got a call on that last week, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Farnell.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Frankly, I'd love it if it would fall under somebody's responsibility, because that is a problem after a lot of discussion. We're not exactly sure where that falls under, whether it's animal control or S P D or-
Mr. Chairman, somebody came out there Friday. I'm not sure which department it was. That was next door to my church.
That's what I was about to say.
Someone came out Friday, so we haven't, we didn't see him Saturday or Sunday, the horses that is.
Well, good, because we don't, we don't want Sam to be having church and be smelling the law. What is it, bull? Is that what you call Sam?
I don't know. We just don't want to see them. Just don't want to see those horses next door.
Okay. Thank you, Dorothy.
Also, Councilor Shine?
Yes.
Speaking of horses, I missed a call, more comment in reference to horses on Jamison Street. I don't have the address right off, but I'll text it to you. But Jamison, it's off of Jamison Street. It's up there, smell in. This guy's moving horses from one place to another, I believe, so. But I'll get that address to you.
And let's see if we can take it back in on it. Let's see if we can find out who it is. You know, who's doing this, and we can kind of put a stop to it.
We can find out who the owner of the property is.
Well, it's across the street in a vacant lot that they're using.
We can find out who the owner of this vacant lot is.
Okay.
And we can forward it to-
All right.
The responsible person.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have any legislation to be added to the agenda today?
Mr. Chairman, we have one item that was inadvertently left off of the agenda. It concerns a contract with Dr. David Clemmons, and we just need to, we would ask you to add it tomorrow, and then it can be adopted if it's ready.
That would be fine, Mr. Thompson, if we have no objections from Mr. Oliver Jenkins. Okay, public comments. Let me have Mr., give me this. Let me have Mr. Chris Henry. Is Mr. Henry here? Mr. Henry, we're going to take you at this time. Why don't you come up? The rest of the public comments will be at the end. And I know we have a couple of lawyers here, and they're probably on the clock, and they'll probably be glad to hear that. So that means that they'll get paid a little bit more. Not that they need the money now, because, you know, lawyers are rich folks in this town. Okay, Mr. Henry?
Greetings, Mr. Mayor.
I'll say the name and address so the clerk can pick it up on the record.
My name is Chris Henry. I reside at 5947 Manitoba Lane, 71107. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, Chairman. Other city councilmen are present. The reason I'm here today is to address the body and to invite the city council out. I have before me a letter that I've given to Ms. Pierce Johnson. For the sake of redundancy, I won't read it, but on June 21st, 2014, Ave Christ Ministries will be hosting this community health fair blood drive. We partner with the likes of Domino's Pizza, so every donor will get Domino's Pizza as well as Outback Steakhouse. Every donor will get a $5 gift card to Outback Steakhouse, and it is the goal of our ministry to get as many people out there present to support the community as well as what we're trying to accomplish. And we want to invite each and every one of you out on June 21st from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. So I'll, do I need to pass you a copy of this letter, Mr. Chairman?
Not really. If you gave one to the clerk holder, have you contacted the fire department and if they, you might be able to get some assistance from the fire department?
Yes, sir. We have contacted the fire department. We have a truck, an engine company that'll be present taking blood pressures. We're sending a copy of this very same letter, inviting them out today after this meeting.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sibley, I believe we have some appointments for tomorrow.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two for tomorrow. Ms. Janet Jackson and Ms. Sharon Pilkington. They're both in chambers today, so if it's okay to allow them to work tomorrow, we could bring them forward and introduce them, let them answer any questions that the council may have.
That would be, that would be fine. Did you want them to stand and maybe wave their hands and announce?
We already know them. That's great.
Okay.
Barbara, would you want, just come forward, please, and announce who's up for what and benefit a bunch?
Good afternoon, council. We've been doing a lot of work within the department, and we have been fortunate that we've reworked some of our issues with customer service, and we're now filling the position of customer service superintendent. And as most of you were aware, as the assistant to the director, that position is over customer service, and Sharon was having such a great time working in that area. She decided to apply for the position and obviously was very well qualified. So we're excited. She's got a plan. She's got a vision, lots and lots of energy, as all of you very well know. So we're very excited about that. That left an opening for her position as assistant to the director, which handles most of the budget. And Ms. Janet Jackson has been working in water and sewer for, since 2007, and prior to that worked 27 years with AT&amp;T in their accounting and working with their engineering division. And she's been my confidential secretary for the past several months and has been just an absolute pleasure to work with, just awesome. I say something, and all of a sudden, it's magically on my desk. So she's been great, and so we're really looking forward to kind of, you know, continuing to make rearrangements and improve our team and administration.
Does a new hairstyle that Sharon has, does that go with the job?
That's, that's, that was her choice. That was not, that was not a job-issued haircut. So, no.
Okay. Well, I didn't know whether it was a job issue or not. Any questions at this point? If not, tomorrow we'll be looking. Okay.
Quiet on this question. I have a comment. I will say that certainly that customer service in my time up here has ebbed and flowed in terms of the amount of complaints that I've gotten. And I, just to say, there were definitely some times that were better than there are today, and so I look forward to what impact in a positive manner you will have on that. And I have every confidence that you will. It's not, but I mean, it's just a reality. I don't know about everybody else, but I've had some more complaints than I normally have of late, and I, you know, look forward to your impact.
Well, and on top of that, I appreciate each one of y'all, because when you get a customer complaint, you know there's always two sides to the story, and you give us the time and the opportunity to answer the other side of the story, and we appreciate y'all working with us on that. And Mr. Mayor, Yolanda, she's her weight in gold. Love her. She's a great person to work with and really a great person to have on your staff. We appreciate her very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you all tomorrow.
Thank you, Barbara.
She might be asking for a raise after that.
That's all we have for confirmations, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No more comments? Mr. Sibley would turn it back over to you.
Under Section 8, consent agenda legislation, we have none for introduction. We do have one item for adoption. Resolution 99 authorizes Hall Tech Building and Development Corporation to connect to lots 159, 160, 183, and 186, North Ferry Crossing, Unit Number 6, to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport.
Mike, do you have any comments on that?
I do not.
All right, Mr. Sibley, let's go on.
Under Section 9, regular agenda legislation, these are resolutions on second reading and final passage or which will require only one reading. Number 94 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the city of Shreveport and Providence Development, LLC, for the private water and sewer improvements for Providence Phase 2, Units A and B.
Mike, any comments?
Continued growth in southeast Shreveport.
Wow. Kind of sounds like the Broughtmore area. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Number 95A is a resolution authorizing the modification of terms of the home loan agreement between the city of Shreveport Cornerstone Assistance Foundation, Incorporated, and Southwood Gardens Adult Community Partnership in regard to Southwood Gardens Apartments.
Any questions?
Yes. I have some questions, and I guess mechanically on how this goes, I understand. Well, my question is, when we make this forgiveness, is there any type of kind of place to put the money once we forgive this project to potentially loan it out again? And how do we, because some of its principal, I mean, I guess it's really interest that's already been paid today. No principal is being forgiven, right?
No.
But it's just, but some of it's interest that's already been paid essentially, right, on their schedule?
It's accrued interest.
Accrued. So tell me from a, I'll call it, financial standpoint, why we're incentivized to do something like this, other than to make it available for another project? And if so, what is that other project? And are we working on it with the same individual, or is it a different group? And kind of tell me that kind of rationale.
We have a number of, we did probably about 14 of these projects over the last, I'll say, 15 years. Ninety-five percent of them are on a cash flow note, meaning that they only pay if they have the funds available. Southwood Gardens is one of few that have been paying over the last 17 years of their note. They have paid $225,000, which all went to interest and none went to principal. So they've been really good stewards of the money. The likelihood of us getting this money back will be probably nil to none. Typically, it's a 30-year note. To get it back in 17 years with $225,000 already being paid is really good. What we will do with the dollars is, it's a federal dollar, so we have to reinvest it into another project. It would not necessarily be one of their projects. We have a deficit within our requests for services that span into the millions of dollars. We have two projects that we're challenged with today. We have a $600,000 gap in one project. They can't move forward. We have another project where we have an $800,000 gap, and it's just on and on and on. And so there's a tremendous need to get these monies back and to reinvest them into our community to the much, much needed projects.
And then kind of on, I'll call it, on this forgiveness factor. So the federal government gives us the money to be good stewards of it, and then do they have to sign off on any of this forgiveness, or it's totally something they're turning to us? Okay. And then, I guess just out of curiosity, does somebody have the schedule of how these loans are structured, just for me to look at one?
Certainly, we can provide that to you.
Can you send me one in an email or something between now and tomorrow? Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bonnie. Proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Ordinance 90, excuse me. Ordinance 96 affirmed the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Home Federal Bank to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. This matter has a public hearing to be held June 24, 2014, and is not to be adopted prior to June 24, 2014.
Okay, continue, please.
Number 97 affirms the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Petroleum Building, LLC, to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. This matter has a public hearing scheduled for June 24, and is not to be adopted prior to June 24, 2014.
Any observations?
Just a brief comment. If you'll recall, these are the ones that we've already approved, but there was some information left out when we submitted it to the state, and so this is a correction of that. It's nothing new.
Thank you.
Resolution 98 is a resolution selecting the times as the official journal for the city of Shreveport for the period commencing July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2015.
Any observation? Please, Mr. Sibley.
Resolution 100 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages on July 12, 2014, relative to dispensing sale and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages at 1251 Dollzell Street, the Great Wrath Brewery hosted by Gold Play Highland Restoration Association, and Fairfield Historic District Association for a 5K raise benefiting Great Results Equine Assisted Therapies, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Any observation? Please.
Just another new race in the city to raise money for a great cause.
Please, continue.
Resolution 101 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated property as surplus.
Any observation? Please, continue.
Section B is introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to June 24, 2014. Number 102 ratifies the use of certain equipment by Urban Support Agency.
Any observation? Please.
Number 103 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the city of Shreveport and Juniper Builders, Incorporated, for the private water and sewer improvements for Long Lake Subdivision, Unit Number 21.
Any observation? Please.
Section C is introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to June 24, 2014. Ordinance 60 amends the 2014 capital improvements budget, otherwise provides with respect thereto. This is the Airfield Directional Guidance Sign Replacement Program.
Any observation?
Mr. Shine?
Yes, sir.
There is an ordinance number 60 already on the agenda zoning C-33-14. I think this probably should have been 65. We'll make that change or take any other action, or we have to make that correction, just letting you know.
Please. Okay.
Number 61 amends the 2014 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. This is to reconcile some emergency shelter grant funds that were received by the department.
Any observations? Please.
Ordinance 62 repeals part of ordinance number 9 of 2007, which created a four-way stop intersection at Danville Court, Helmsdale Court, and Stonehaven Drive, and to enact the intersection of Danville Court, Helmsdale Court, and Stonehaven Drive as a two-way stop intersection.
Councilman Webb?
Yes, sir. This was, I want to convert it back to a two-way stop.
Okay.
I know that works. They looked at it, they're buying it.
All right. Please, Mr. Sibley.
Ordinance 63 amends the 2014 general fund budget. I believe this is regarding the track program.
And just an update on that, I think that that one's ready to go, right? Or is ordinance 63, I'm sorry, when you said the SPAR program, I thought, I'm thinking of ordinance 53.
No, the track, yeah, the track.
Sorry. Wrong one in my head.
You're thinking 53?
Yeah.
Please.
There's an ordinance to be introduced that's not to be adopted prior to July 8th, 2014, and that is number 64. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary legal instruments to effect the exchange of certain immovable property owned by the city of Shreveport, or certain immovable property owned by Louisiana CVS Pharmacy, LLC, repelling ordinance number 35 of 2014, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
This is one that was on the agenda, and we took it off to replace it.
But it only needs a, what, is this a second reading on this, or?
It's been reintroduced, and this may be one that needs the three-
Oh, that's right.
Notice requirements. I'm looking to Julie.
This is one of the, first, we had it on there.
Did you take it off before?
It's one that was supposed to have had been advertised three times in 15 days, and we missed it and let y'all go ahead and adopt it. So we decided the best way to do it was to start over.
Okay.
Get the three advertisements in properly.
Okay.
Okay, please, Mr. Sibley.
Section D is ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 36 amends and reenacts Article 4, Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances relative to fireworks, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. There are three amendments, and this matter was previously postponed.
And I think I'm going to ask that we table this legislation till the second week in July, based on our last discussion.
Okay. We'll be looking for you to make that motion tomorrow. Okay, Mr. Sibley.
Ordinance 53 amends the 2014 capital improvements budget. There is one amendment.
On this one, we had postponed it last time in order to get some answers regarding the availability of some of the funding that's referenced in it. We did get some answers, but still have a couple of questions. We did get some answers, but still have a couple of questions. So we may have those answered by tomorrow, but I may be asking that we postpone it again just to make sure that we have full answers on there.
I would hope that we could get the answers on this so we can get this done. And I want to thank all the council members for giving up some of that travel.
That's the other one. Now, that one's, that one's ready. That one's ready. This is the one.
Okay.
This is the one about moving some capital funds around.
And that one is ready? Yeah, that's okay.
Certainly, one thing that, whether it's in an email or a discussion tomorrow, the part about the convention center hotel funding maintenance, I just kind of wanted to get a better feel on where the source of that is and where it is projected and what the, I mean, that's obviously, I hope, is everybody's consideration.
That is exactly what we're looking at.
Okay.
All right.
Do you represent ordinance 53 right now?
Yes. All right, Mr. Sibley.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers. Also, before you go on, don't know if you're intent to move forward on this tomorrow, but I think it would be appropriate that we have some department heads offer some feedback to the council as well with regard to some of their thoughts. You've got several of these projects, like the police facility, that is not yet even a closed project. I think in looking at the initial draft of the legislation, it had one source of funding projected to be about $800,000 being available. I think by the time it got to a point to where we even had some discussions within the administration, that number had gone from $800,000 down to $600,000 because that project is still under construction.
We had heard some feedback from one of the department heads that is part of an ongoing discussion as well. So we'd welcome that certainly.
If it's convenient for the administration, we would entertain that.
Ordinance 54 authorizes an amendment to the agreement then leased with MB Industries LLC. This matter was previously postponed. This is one that the mayor asked that the council consider tabling on tomorrow.
Okay.
Table rather than remove.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Want it replaced on the table as opposed to being removed.
I'll accept the motion from you tomorrow to table it.
You got it.
All right.
Number 55 amends and reenacts Chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances relative to human relations to establish a human relations commission to provide relative to its offices and powers, to provide relative to administrative matters, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Any observation?
I think it's ready to go.
Please.
Ordinance 56A is zoning matter C-2214. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance, by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of West Canal and West 70th Street from B2 Neighborhood Business District to B3 Community Business District.
Let's move on, please.
Ordinance 57 is zoning matter C-3014. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance, by rezoning property located on the northeast side of North Market, 1,200 feet north of Tanglewood Drive, and being also 190 feet northeast of North Market, Shreveport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from B2 Neighborhood Business District to B2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District, limited to an indoor dog training, grooming, and overnight boarding facility only.
Any observation? Please.
Ordinance 58 is zoning matter C-3114. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the south side of Olive Street, bounded by Southern Avenue and Buckner Street, Shreveport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from B2 Neighborhood Business District to RAE Residence Agriculture Extended Use District, limited to a nonprofit community garden and outreach facility only.
Any observation?
I'd be asking for your support for this tomorrow.
Please.
Ordinance 59 is zoning matter C-3214. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Yuri Drive in East Washington Street, 176 feet north of East Washington, Shreveport Kettle Parish, from B2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to B3 Community Business District.
Any observation?
Also supportive of this one.
Please.
Ordinance 60, which I believe the clerk noted should be 65.
This will remain at 65.
This would stay, the other would be 65, thanks. This is zoning matter C-3314. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the southeast side of East 70th Street, 2,300 feet east of Dixie Gardens Road, Shreveport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from B2 Neighborhood Business District to B3 Community Business District.
Good, Mr. Shine.
Please.
That concludes all the scheduled legislation. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Mr. Thompson. Is it anything that's been tabled that you see that needs to come up?
Clerk has not been notified of anything that needs to come up.
Okay, well, you know how those Jenkins fellows are.
You know how, it's very easy to pass the buck and move the responsibility over to somebody else.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Chair.
Yes.
I was wanting to ask the administration about ordinance number 20. Where are we, are we getting anywhere closer to doing what we need to do to get that money?
For the one-time bonuses, Mr. Webb? Yes, sir. We're still awaiting the Home Mortgage Authority to take action. I believe that some new names have been submitted. They are hopefully going to meet and consider our request, but we are still holding for them.
Got some names, so then they'll come and consider for half.
We need to confirm the new.
We haven't submitted the names to the council for confirmation at this point in time. We're still doing some reviewing.
All right. Mr. Sibley.
We have several property standards fields.
Ms. Farnell is coming forward, Mr. Chairman.
I see she's back in the chambers. I know you are the chambers, and I wanted to give you time to take care of business.
Thank you, Mr. Shine. We have several cases today. The first case is 2701 Martin Luther King Drive, Councilwoman McCullough's area. She has complied, so we would ask that this case be closed.
Oh, we'll just move to close it today or tomorrow?
No, we're going to close it today.
Today?
She has complied. If you look at the pictures, everything is.
It's been moved by Councilwoman McCullough, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin, that we would close this case. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Our next case.
It has been closed with a 7-0 vote.
Our second case is for demolition, 3640 Del Rio Streets in Councilman Sam Jenkins' area. The owner, Mr. Terry Williams, is present. Mr. Terry Williams is present. This is 3640 Del Rio. He was here, we've given him 90 days. He is repairing the structure. I'm very well pleased with what he's doing. Because of the weather, I'd like to continue to monitor this house for 60 days to give him an opportunity to complete.
Mr. Williams, before we shut this down, you want to come up and say a word or two? This is what democracy is all about, so we want to give you an opportunity.
I have nothing to say, just if you don't give me the 60, uh, monitoring for 60 days, I'll be complete.
All right.
There are a few things I need to do.
God bless you, Councilman Sam Jenkins. I was your motion to give him 60 days.
I think we talked about that last time we was here, about the safety part, now you see where I said I was going with that. That's what I need to add just for the break it on off.
Well, you are a man of your word.
I try to be.
We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Don't find very many nowadays.
Oliver Levin, thank you, ma'am.
It's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, that we would give this gentleman 60 days to complete. All in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. It's motion passes with a 7-0 vote.
The next case is same address. It was for care premise. This morning, Mr. Williams did bring a dumpster out, so as we speak, he's trying to get everything abated. We're going to do this one as we did the demolition. We're just going to monitor it because this is in direct correlation with the rehab that he's doing. So we're going to let it ride for.
Mr. Sam Jenkins, what is your pleasure?
How many days?
60.
So moved.
Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins to give him 60 days. That was seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, who will probably have to do some of the monitoring of it. And all in favor, vote yes, opposed is no?
Mr. Oliver Jenkins, please.
Yes.
I think it threw him off when I said he would be a part of the monitoring.
I may have distracted him.
Okay. Passes with the 7-0 vote. Okay.
Okay, our next case is 3040 Skelly Street. 3040 Skelly is Councilwoman McCullough's.
The property is in Skelly.
No, this is in Councilwoman.
He is in his district and the property is in my district.
It's Councilman Webb, I'm sorry. 6050.
Where is it now?
No, this is in your area.
Okay.
This is in Skelly.
Is the gentleman here?
I don't think he's here. The owner still needs to finish replacing the seals on the structure. He hasn't done very much as far, it's still unsecured. There is nothing here, and he hasn't contacted me or called. So I'm going to ask for the upholding of the council, I mean, the upholding of the Property Standards Board of Appeals.
Okay, but now, is this for demolition is what we're doing?
Yes, it was.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman McCullough, seconded by Councilman Ron Webb, that we would uphold the ruling of the Property Standards Board. All in favor, vote yes, opposed is no?
Let me, the only reason I ask before we go any further, I mean, there's definitely, I mean, I'm okay with supporting what everybody else, but I mean, this property doesn't, on the basis, seem to require as much work as other properties.
And that's just based on the pure exterior. I have no idea. I mean, am I the only one? I was trying to see where is it unsecured?
We've been trying to contact, work is stopped. We've been trying to contact him. Have no response. He's not here today, so.
It stopped June 9?
I would like to, if he wishes to further, then to file another appeal, because we have not had any contact.
I mean, I understand you're in a tough position here, but essentially, we're saying to demolish this because it's unsecured.
Where is it unsecured at?
And the pictures don't show that it's necessarily unsecured. I'm not debating that it is, but.
If you would look on the, if you look on the side of the house.
Water heater.
There is a hot water heater door. This door has been like this since December.
The back door is not secured either.
I mean, if she can't get in touch with him, she can't get in touch with him.
And the only reason why I'm requesting this is that, in the hopes that he would contact us. We haven't had, we haven't even had any contact. I can't even, you know, I could continue it, but then I'm not sure what is going to happen. His address.
He lives in Ron Webb's district?
No, he's here in Shreveport.
In Ron Webb's district, though.
He live in my district, but the house is in.
I'm happy, as long as everybody's thinking this thing through, what we're about to do, I'm happy to support it. But I'm just saying, relative to other houses that we've seen, what we're going to do here, this seems a little extreme.
He will have 30 days to contact our office once the letters, and at that time.
Okay.
All right.
The next property at.
What was that final, was that? B?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to break in on y'all's conversation, but was that a seven? Okay, thank you. All right.
The next structure is at 600 602 West 73rd Street. Councilman Shine, this is in your area.
It sure is.
Yes, sir. Owner.
Is the owner here?
She has, has a few more things that needs to be done, as you can see.
Let's give her 30 days.
We want to give her 30 more days on this one, sir.
Been moved to give her 30 days, seconded by Councilman Everson. We give her 30 days. All in favor, vote yea, opposed is nay. We give her 30 days, 7-0 vote.
Do you think she can finish it in 30 days?
She didn't do quite enough work on it, it seems.
In 30 days, she can come down here, and if she needs more time.
And we'll be glad, we are very, very.
But we've been in communication with him.
All right, we're very compassionate down here.
She got siding out there, I mean, be stupid not to continue.
Do you have a contact number for Mr. Hawkins?
I can get that to you, ma'am.
Okay.
I can get that to you.
Would you send me a contact number for him?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No, we, thank you very much.
I sent you two text messages for some problems that we had that I didn't share with you. It's on you. Okay.
Officer Collins? Please. We're in your hand.
I wanted to make sure the applicant was here for Southern Pantry.
Is he, is he here?
Yes. You go to tab number one. It's a permit appeal for Southern Pantry. They were denied because of violations. Again, they had numerous violations. I'm going to read them in for record. 9/26/2013, one of the employees had no ABO card and underage sales. They also found another person selling with no ABO card. They all pled guilty. And on 10/19/2013, another employee at underage sales, she also pled guilty. So there's a combination of four different violations and two different times they went in. And because of it, they exceeded numbers, and the police department was not able to approve the application because of that.
Oliver, is that you?
That's me.
Oh, that's. Okay, you make a little motion.
Would you like to make some comments?
I'd like to just make the statement that we've taken the necessary measures to ensure that we're not missing any ID checks. We've gotten ID scanners where you can actually take the ID, scan it, and it'll give you a red box or a green box, whether or not they're buying cigarettes or beer. It'll tell you for either one. If you look at the records since we've gotten those, you'll see that we've not gotten any others. It's kind of been a learning curve for me. We're a small business, it's a one-man band, I do everything there, so it's definitely been learning for me. So we've tried to do everything that we can to make sure that doesn't happen again. And it's a bigger deal to us than originally what, I knew we needed to pay attention, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So we've taken extra measures to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Do any of these employees still work at the store?
No, sir. And on one of the instances where they, that he didn't have his ABO card, he actually did have it, it was expired, and he'd missed the expiration date.
One of the things that we've, we've talked about with other people who've come before. us is, you know, you as owner or manager, I think it's important that you keep up with when those cards expire.
Yes.
Because you can't always count on your employees to do that.
I agree, and we actually keep a list of that now.
Need to keep up with that as well.
Yes, sir.
And then the other one is, you know, other people were offering them employment, and then they were supposed to go get the ABO card once they got the job. And some of them didn't do that, and I'm not saying that's the case here, but I suspect one of them is that case.
In this case, it was the case. I was under the impression that there was a grace period. The guy that owns the establishment, he may visit it once a month, and that was what he had instructed me. So, after the first instance, we learned a lesson on him.
Okay.
I think that, I frequent the establishment occasionally, and I think it's welcomed to the neighborhood. It's clean, looks nice all the time, and that's good. So my motion would be that, Mr. Chairman, that we look at a six-month probation. If we don't have any issues for six months, then things good to go. Glad to hear that you've put some practices in place. Good luck to you.
Oh, second?
Okay, it's been moved that we would give a six-month probation period. And at that time, we'll look at it again, as been seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yea, opposed is nay.
Thank you, Councilman.
Passes with the seven oh vote.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Shine, we have two other appeals on the agenda. One is SC thirteen fourteen, East Side of Railsback, and the other is the Caddo Parish Animal Services Board decision concerning a dog.
Mr. Chairman, I think we got an agreement on the latter, if you want to take that up first.
Okay, that would be fine.
That was, I believe the parties came to an agreement, and a written copy of the agreement has been furnished to each member of the council. But I just simply asked at this time, maybe City Attorney, Mr. Keel, representing the applicant here, maybe just give us an overview of what the agreement is so we can have some acknowledgement and understanding on the record, and then we can put it up for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm here today pitch hitting for Christina Wimbley, who's the attorney in our office, who originally came before you to present this matter. She has worked out a stipulation with Mr. Dan Keel, who is present today, who represents the owner of Alize, the dog that's in question here. The stipulations were affected by the parties as a way to resolve the situation with the animal control appeal that has been made to you all. If you recall, the Director of Animal Control originally made a determination that the dog, Alize, would be deemed as vicious. That matter was subsequently appealed to the Animal Services Board in accordance with provisions of Chapter fourteen of the Animal Control Ordinance. The Animal Services Board made a determination that they would uphold the decision of the Animal Services Director and classify the dog as vicious. As a result of discussions and this appeal, the following stipulations have been made and are recommended to the City Council in regard to this appeal. That the appeal is proper under the provisions of Chapter fourteen of the City of Shreveport's Code of Ordinances. The meat of the stipulations are contained in item number two. It's that the dog would be returned to the owner, Matthew Pfeifer, that the classification of the dog as vicious would be overturned, and that the dog would now be classified as dangerous. The dog would be returned to the owner, Matthew Pfeifer, who agrees to permanently remove the animal both from the jurisdictional limits of the City of Shreveport as well as Caddo Parish on or before June twentieth, two thousand fourteen. Subject to verification that the dog has been removed, and that verification would come by means of the microchip that is, has been placed in the animal. Mr. Pfeifer further agrees that by confession of judgment, if it is appropriate for these proceedings, that he will surrender the dog to be euthanized in the event he violates any provisions of the stipulations by failing to remove the dog, remove the dog from the City of Shreveport or Caddo Parish on or before June twentieth, two thousand fourteen, by returning the dog to the City of Shreveport or Caddo Parish, or by harboring the dog within the city limits of Shreveport or within Caddo Parish at any time after June twentieth of two thousand fourteen. That the council's decision to overturn the decision of the Director and the Animal Services Board would effectively render this appeal satisfied, and there is litigation pending in Caddo District Court right now that does not involve the City of Shreveport. We are not a party, we have no interest in that, but that your agreement to these stipulations would effectively terminate that litigation. The fourth stipulation recognizes that the city is not a party to that litigation, and we have no interest in it, nor are we, do we have any interest or a party to any discussions with the Caddo Parish Animal Services Board and or Caddo Parish in regard to any boarding fees as a result, as a result of the dog being impounded at the Animal Services Center. Mr. Keel is here and will agree that these are the terms of the stipulations as made with Ms. Wimbley and submitted to the council for acceptance.
Thank you, Ms. Keel, Mr. Mayor, City Council Chamber. Appreciate your attention to this. This was, as you can tell, a complex mechanism, and there were some procedural questions, and we've been able to address all those, and we believe this is a workable solution to the situation. I have already filed, fax filed, dismissals without prejudice by agreement with the other parties to the actual lawsuit. And as we said, the city's not a party to this, nor has it ever been, but because of the complexities in the legislative mechanism, we just wanted to cover all the bases.
One additional thing, Mr. Keel just made me mindful of, and I think it's important for the record. Any stipulation or resolution of an appeal as it relates to a dog that has been classified as dangerous or vicious, we take seriously. In this instance, though, we recommend that you accept these stipulations due to the difficulty in trying to actually determine whether or not this dog, Alize, was the dog that was involved in the attack. So that's the reason we're making this recommendation to you. It gets the dog out of the City of Shreveport, it gets the dog out of Caddo Parish.
And I just want to say, everyone has been, has done a pretty good job of keeping me informed on the developments. That's why I think it's a good resolution. Should have asked for your support on it. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that the April third, twenty fourteen decision of the Caddo Parish Animal Control Board, case number C zero two four zero one nine three five, concerning Mr. Matthew Pfeifer's dog, Alize, changed the classification of Alize from dangerous to vicious, overturned for the reasons and under conditions contained in stipulations agreed to by the appellate and the Office of the City Attorney for the City of Shreveport dated June nine, twenty fourteen. Of course, each member of the council has a copy of that, and it's also attached to this motion. That'll be my motion on it.
You've heard the motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Ron Webb. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yea, opposed is nay.
Mr. President?
We have a seven oh vote on this motion. Okay. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay. Zorn appeal, we have SC thirteen fourteen. We have some people that would like to speak. The first one is Attorney Tom Arsenault. You wanna make some remarks on that, Mr. Arsenault?
Mr. Shine, I only requested to speak in the event anybody else spoke. We have, you've gotten written materials from us, and we'll have a presentation tomorrow on the appeal.
Okay, Mr. Larkins? Does that go for you too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that go for, you wanna come up and make some remarks now?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman. My name is Whitney Pesnell. I'm an attorney with the Pesnell Law Firm, a PLC. Our address is one hundred Travis Street, Suite eleven hundred, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one zero one, and our telephone number is three one eight two two six five five seven seven. I represent Willis Knight &amp; Health System, the Finnish thirty-one thirty-two coalition, and Karen Wells. And we are here on the appeal from the MPC's denial of Larkin Development at Railsback LLC's application for approval of a subdivision plat in the expletive subdivision. We did receive a copy of the letter that Mr. Arsenault submitted to the council in support of that appeal last week. We have prepared a letter of our own, which I have filed with Mr. Thompson. We have a copy for each of the council members. That letter sets out our position with respect to the appeal. And we don't want to beat a dead horse. The letter is there, you can review it. We will appear and we will make a formal presentation tomorrow, if that's satisfactory. But I see no sense in going through it twice or taking your time now, if you prefer to address it tomorrow. So unless you have any questions, we will defer further discussion until the council takes this matter up tomorrow.
We would actually prefer for you to address this tomorrow with the, in relation to Mr. Larkins and Mr. Arsenault, but if we have any questions from any council members at this time, I would hope that you...
We'd be happy to take them, yes, sir.
Not necessarily a question, Mr. Chairman, but I just hope both sides tomorrow can spend some time talking about, it appears that there may have been a motion at the MPC to modify their decision, and I think it involved maybe excluding some sections of Mr. Larkins' property from development. So, I'm just sending this to both sides tomorrow. It would be helpful to me if I could have some discussion of, have you address this particular point. That's something that I'm gonna be very interested in hearing, what each side has to say about.
I'm sure we can do that. Anything further?
Okay, any more questions? And Mr. Thompson, I would hope that maybe you or somebody could restate the ruling that was made by the MPC tomorrow, so we know where we're starting from, and we know where we're trying to go.
Hello?
You could do it, or Mr. Jean could, but either way, you want to...
I mean, either, is Mr. Jean here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you, would you come prepare tomorrow? And I would hope...
Do we have this letter?
Mr. Thompson, that the, and Mr. Jean, I would hope that tomorrow that we could get the chairman of the MPC here. Is she here? I'm, I'm sorry if I don't... Okay, please.
I got it, I got it.
Her intent was to be here, and she's in court at the moment, and is trying her best to get here. So, I've been texting back and forth, her intent was to be here, but she got stuck.
We will probably be gone by the time she gets here today, but just tell her to please to get here tomorrow, so she had a wonderful article in the, in the Shreveport Times, and you know, I, I read the Times every day, and, and, and I have a tendency to believe what they be saying, so I thought she had a wonderful article, and I would just like to see her come down in person and present that.
Yes, sir.
And because tomorrow, now, you know, you come and kind of state what the MPC did, and, 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 you know, we'll have a starting point, because I don't like the people to try to read between lines or wonder where we, where we starting at and where we trying to go, so.
Yes, sir.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, I know from the MPC standpoint, the commissioners make the ultimate decision and the vote.
Yes, sir.
But I'd be interested in knowing a little bit more information concerning this point too. This motion to modify the MPC decision, and I read over the minutes, I'd just like to have some idea of, it looked like it never even got to the, to the MPC, right? Maybe some technicalities that didn't allow it to get there. Are you familiar with the motion I'm talking about?
Yes, sir. There was, there was a motion, and there was a vote.
Right.
And that vote, as I recall, it failed a vote to three to four. There were two members absent. But there, there was a vote on, that was the first, that was the first motion. Yes, sir. That was the first motion, and there was a subsequent motion to deny, and that vote was five to two.
That's what I was saying. I mean, I was thinking that it was a motion to deny.
There was actually two motions, sir. There was a motion to approve...
Right.
...that, that removed some of the lots that were in the filing, and that motion failed in a three to four vote.
And Jean, I'm, you know, I'm puzzled because a few years back, the citizens of Shreveport voted to, to do thirty-one thirty-two, and it seems like all of a sudden, maybe a group didn't want to do it, and, and, you know, what I'm hearing, because of, of all the traffic and, and from an economic development standpoint, we really need this to go to port, because I'm told that that would be hundreds of jobs, maybe, really thousands of jobs, and, and the amount of traffic, because most of these companies will be not so much using the river, but they're gonna be using the highways in order to, for their products to come in and out, so. And from what I could read in the article, I mean, this is, this is what the MPC took into consideration. So I would hope that the chairman would be here on tomorrow, and if you, I mean, you just shed some light on that, and if you could come back tomorrow and, and, you know, shed some light on that, I think we'd be extremely happy.
Right, sir. I'll make sure that I convey that to our chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Elliott Stonecypher, you want to come up and make some remarks on that?
I'm Elliott Stonecypher, Finnish thirty-one thirty-two coalition. My address is ninety-five thirty-seven Rochelle Drive in Shreveport, which is in Twelve Oaks. Mr. Chairman, I would like to at least ask a question on top of trying to at least maybe provide one more bit of information about what Councilman Jenkins is asking about.
Please, you.
We are confused ourselves about, and I don't know that there's a resource for this, so I wish I was able to be more specific. We are hearing a great deal of misinformation about whether or not there are multiple routes still pending. The MPC ordinance or vote that we were just discussing was related very directly to that question. And the connection was, is there a way to build houses on either side, if you will, around the route? The MPC went through that discussion, and the way they voted three to four against it was what was the correct information, but the misinformation has flowed directly ever since that meeting on May the seventh. So, I will say this, tomorrow, we're gonna make very sure that finally, we hope and we intend, everyone can understand how many route possibilities there remain today, because there is a broad, broad misconception that there is a route that has already become the route, and that is categorically untrue. And we will spend a great deal of our time tomorrow demonstrating to the members of council just how many route options there were that have not been disposed of and are the basis for our federal suit which is pending.
Now, you know where the, where thirty-one thirty-two stops there now, at Flona Lucas?
Yes, sir.
I mean, just physically looking at it, which I did do this weekend, just to refresh my memory. Is it not, and I, I think I got in my mind that... Is it not, and I think I got in my mind that, I'm not certain that we actually have a, what you would call an approved route, for lack of a better word. I'm not trying to get into the semantics.
I understand.
But isn't it plausible that the roadway is going to continue, it's going to pick up at that point and continue southward or whatever direction it is, straight that way? But I mean, you probably wouldn't know that.
I can be, again, I can answer that question. We have spent three years studying every document we can find and reconstructing the history. I live in 12 Oaks, and when I bought there, I believed exactly what you just described and found out that that was not the case. That acreage that you're describing, it's on the south side of Flueno Lucas that the city owns.
Correct.
It was always described as 16 acres, and we learned that it's possibly as many as 23 acres. But that land was expropriated by the city in 1999. And that was done in exactly the shape that one half of the interchange would be, the south half, if the highway continued from where it ends now and went over Flueno Lucas. So that exact shape that the city expropriated, paid for and expropriated, was going to send the route exactly through what is now 12 Oaks. And to show you how literally that is, the study which determined all that was in 1992, and there was a series of things that then progressed from there that made good sense to go ahead and build the highway, the way that piece of property is shaped. The '92 study determined the preferred corridor route. It swept from that acreage south toward the port. And that corridor route, by the way, is in the public record here and in many other places. It's not easy, not difficult to get you another copy. That was in 1992 that it was picked. So in 1996, the city government went to the people of Shreveport in an election, which was very unusual, and asked for $3.5 million in bond money, basically for a federal match. And that money was to, according to the ballot proposition language, very specific language, to complete the highway to the port, not to Flueno Lucas Road. So it passed 64% to 36%. This is in 1996. And faith with the people of Shreveport was being kept, and in 1999, the city bought the acreage on the south side of Flueno Lucas to do exactly what the voters had asked, had been asked to do. In 2000, 12 Oaks was built on top of that route. Everything that we're here tussling about is about the fact, not that the route was moved in 2003, 2004 to the Railsback roadside of Bio Pierre, although that did happen. Now, there were no public meetings. There were no hearings. But it was moved. So now the highway has to go from those 16 acres that were actually pointed toward the port, and now it has to sweep over Bio Pierre and then head south. And Councilman Jenkins, I say this with, I don't even know how to express it. I hope everyone's listening. I'll put it that way. Right now, over three years since killing the extension was attempted on April 7th, 2011, we are all participating in a great, grand cover-up, because nobody wants to find out why 12 Oaks got built on top of the route. That was what caused all this. The highway should have proceeded from the 17 acres in the direction it was pointed and turned and headed through undeveloped land, straight to the port. Now, what has happened instead is that we killed that in an NLCOG meeting back-
Right. Go ahead, on.
Pardon?
Go ahead, on.
We killed that back in 2011. And now, with 12 Oaks sitting there with hundreds of homes, we have to try to figure out a way to honor the vote of the people of Shreveport in 1996. But there's a huge and critical and awful difference. The only undeveloped land left is Mr. Larkin's land for his subdivision. But please, please hear me say again, we have been barred from discussing and finding out how 12 Oaks got built on top of that preferred route. So we are all complicit in allowing that fact to continue. Mr. Chairman, can I continue with what we found out that I told you about today from the port?
Please.
Show you how dramatic this is. One of the members of the group that met April 7th, 2011, and voted with only one dissenting vote to kill the highway is Eric England, who is the director of the Port of Caddo-Bosher. Somehow or another, our wires got crossed, apparently, in trying to get documents from the port. And the MPC meeting was May the 7th. On May the 15th, Mr. England literally ran into a member of the coalition at a restaurant and has been wondering all this time why the coalition has never presented publicly an email that we, of course, have requested in public records requests and in discovery in state court suit. Why the content of that was never discussed. I have the email. I'll be happy to share it with y'all, but the point is this. What we found out in the email, and I will only read one paragraph. By the way, I appreciate the fact that Councilman Corbin has asked very specifically, and I'm trying to honor very directly, that we limit this kind of thing to new information. And Councilman Corbin, you will see, nobody's heard this. This is the last three paragraphs of this email from Eric England to himself, so it would be available in the public record of the Port of Caddo-Bosher, should it ever be requested. It's on June 13th, 2011. He had seconded the motion to, in essence, terminate the highway, but felt very, very mistreated because he was not told the truth about what he was seconding. And from the time of the meeting on April the 7th until the time of this email on June the 13th, he had been working with the Northwest Louisiana Council of Governments to get them to amend their minutes, because he didn't think it was at all, was not at all accurate. He found out that the minutes were never recorded. Somehow or another, there were no recorded minutes of that critical, crucial meeting. And by the way, this loop to the port showed up the first time in the 1956 master plan of Shreveport. That's how long this has been being built and was successfully built until 2000, and then it died. And that's what we're fighting for. But in any case, here are the last three paragraphs. "In addition, I inquired about the proposed tip amendment and the likelihood of there being an adverse impact on the three proposed projects in this fiscal year." He's speaking to the director of NLCOG, and he's now quoting what the director of NLCOG said to him. Quote, "I was stunned," excuse me, this is him still talking, I'll put the quotes in, "I was stunned with what he shared with me after we discussed those items." He shared with me, quote, "I wish I would have spoken up when Larkin put that map on the table showing the 3132 extension route through 12 Oaks. I just didn't get a chance to say that that was the original corridor from years ago and it had changed when I-69 talks began. I wanted to say something, but before I could, y'all had already moved on." End of quote. "I believe the above mentioned lack of interjection and DOT's acknowledgement that the interloop extension corridor, as it was known at the time, did go through 12 Oaks was critical. If there were other routes that were to be brought into the discussion." For those who know this history, they're already sitting here being as surprised as we all were, because until this email came to us, literally, on May the 15th, there has never been an admission in the public record that, in fact, 12 Oaks was built on top of the route. Never. This is the first one. More importantly, what the email says and what Mr. England is obviously available to answer questions about, what it says is, none of us should be here. This never should have happened. If in that meeting, April the 7th, 2011, the director of NLCOG had simply said, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, Mr. Larkin is basing his entire presentation, and by the way, only two people spoke that day, Mr. Larkin and the mayor, nobody else. And one of their attorneys and the two of them put together the resolution that morning. This was a very inside thing. By the way, the only vote against it was the person who knew the history, Mr. Sanders from DOTD. He voted no. Everybody else voted yes. But if somebody had simply said, Mr. Larkin, stop, you may not know that the map you're using is not the route. It's not even available anymore. The route was moved in 2003, 2004. That route is covered up by 12 Oaks. The 2003, 2004 one comes right straight through your land. Mr. Larkin, at the point of that meeting, had already built his bridge. And no one had bothered to tell anybody that that's the only available land left for the route. We can't have a 3132 extension to the port as we promised the people of Shreveport, as they voted their money. We can't if you build your subdivision. This whole fight never, ever should have happened. Why did it happen? Bluntly, and I'm not being personal at all, some people who did some things in the highway planning process in 1999 and 2000 know that they shouldn't have, and they didn't want that to come out. Two members of the council, in good faith, by the way, because I was there, asked us in our first hearing on this matter, public hearing in May of 2011, not to talk about, don't discuss the history of this project. Everybody knew there was something about all this that was wrong, and they wanted to assume that we were past all that. So how did we end up? Tomorrow, I will show you that it gets much, much worse. And that knowingly and deliberately, routes that are going to severely damage people living in 12 Oaks, yes, including me, those routes were deliberately, and they're backed up by emails, deliberately withheld from going to the stage one study. So now, Mr. Larkin has a route. It's the route everybody thinks is the route. But the other routes that would have protected 12 Oaks, very specifically drawn to protect people who already owned their homes, were deliberately hidden and were never presented to the public, even though there was a hearing in August of 2012 for exactly that reason. Once a cover-up sets in, it never ends. And that's where we are. And it has divided us. It has caused fights unbelievable. It's been a gross abuse of power. And let me just tell you two things that are going to happen, in my opinion. I was born here, lived here all my life. Number one, when the people of a city vote their money for a specific purpose, and the ballot language says, in this case, "to the Port of Caddo-Bosher," but then a few people, less than 10, get together and decide that Flueno Lucas will fit just fine. Let's use Flueno Lucas. We don't need to build that highway. They're going five-lane Flueno Lucas. We knew Flueno Lucas was going to be five-laned for 25 years before this happened. There was never any doubt Flueno Lucas was going to be five-laned. But some people who had another agenda wanted to jam Flueno Lucas down everybody's throat, even though the people had voted very directly, put their money up, for completion to the port. That's why the port and the chamber and everybody else is in favor of completing 3132, as it was supposed to be. There's a problem, though. There's only one place that there is undeveloped land to do it. Mr. Larkin bought that land in 2006. What are we going to do about that? I don't know about that part, but I know this. How does a city ever go to its people again in a bond issue? No matter what the bond issue is, after you don't do what they put their money up in 96 to do, why would they ever believe city government here again? And I'm telling you, I don't believe they will believe. I think they will know that this is a kind of violation that just never occurs. It is a breaking of faith, the size and kind of which I've never seen in my entire career. The second thing that's going to happen, if this council, at this point, once again overrules the MPC, why would a new executive director come here? We have one recent instance where we have a bunch of highways being built in a highway path. MPC voted unanimously to stop that. The council voted unanimously to overrule the MPC. The new MPC, the reconstituted board, acting in good faith. If this happens again, why would a new executive director see any point in messing with the MPC? It doesn't have a function. How many ways to benefit one particular, small, small, small group of people? Can you not tell the truth to the people of Shreveport and it not really, really hurt us? Tomorrow, Councilman Jenkins, you will find out that there are many available routes. You will find out, you will see a record of what was done to hide routes that would have protected 12 Oaks that will stun you. Believe me, it stunned us. Now, if this goes the way it's always gone, we're going to all just ignore those facts. We're going to let the people of 12 Oaks pick up the tab. The right of way of the route that we all think is the route is in the backyards of people in 12 Oaks. There was a hearing for them to be able to speak up and stop that. And guess what? None of these routes made it to the hearing. Knowingly and deliberately withheld from the very people who will pay the price. We shouldn't be here. We asked back in May of 2011, and I don't think anybody took us seriously, that there be an independent investigation of the history of every bit of this. I'm not saying it's a criminal investigation and investigation. Stem to stern, let's find out how in the world all of that work from 1956 to 1999 was blown up in 2000 with no public record. How can that happen? How much will all of us suffer because it happened? So tomorrow, I will again argue, and I hope I will argue it in a way so graphic that nobody will ever be able to ignore it again. It falls to us here today, those of us fighting this fight, council members, me, Willis Knighton, the Larkin team, it falls to us to straighten it out. I'm really sorry that it's three years later, because we should have done it when we knew to do it. It is still ours to do. And that's how this fight stops. By the way, I will also explain tomorrow that not only are we waiting on a federal judge to rule on the very issues of the hidden routes, but contrary to what many of you may have been told, we have made a very valid offer to settle this entire case. But you know what it requires? It requires the truth. It requires those who did what shouldn't have been done to let go of this and let it all come out, if that's what happens. Because the people in 12 Oaks have a right under federal law, and the booklet that that's in is 36 pages long, I know it. They have a right to have gone to that hearing in August of 2012 and seen the routes that will destroy their property values. They were withheld. The routes never made it into the stage zero study report. They never made it to that hearing. So the settlement is going to require that the hearing happen, a real hearing with real exchange of information, and the people in 12 Oaks get to see what the hidden routes were. That's what it requires. It requires that the route that is so-called the Willis Knighton route, it's not the Willis Knighton, it's St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton, the Oaks, that route option never should have been in there in the first place. The settlement says it's got to come out. By the way, if you pick that route, you know the first thing that happens? City has to pay the federal- City has to pay the federal government $27 million for the last leg of 31-32 from Burt Coons to Flueno Lucas. Who really believed the city was going to pay for the federal government to take that up, tear it up? Nobody. But that route option is still in there. It's got to come out. We can straighten this out, but it falls to us here today to do it. We should have done it three years ago, and more importantly, it should have been done by true public meetings and hearings in 1999 and 2000. Councilman Jenkins, I promise you, this whole business of the 3-4 vote at MPC, and whether or not there are other routes available, is at the dead heart of everything that's gone wrong. So your instincts are absolutely dead on. But it's not what you think, because you probably think there's only one route available, and it's not the case. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just, uh...
That's a quick question. You said you made a formal offer to Mr. Larkin. Do you have a copy of that document?
No, it's not to Mr. Larkin. Mr. Larkin is not a party to the settlement. I'm sorry, somebody laughed. I don't know why that's funny. This is a federal suit, and the defendants are NLCOG, the State Highway Department, and the Federal Highway Department. And yes, and it was actually made to the NLCOG attorney.
Is that a public record, or is that...
No, and I don't even know, do we know if that's been reduced to writing yet?
No.
They took the position in several conversations that the Federal Highway Department would not let them take out the Willis Knighton route, which we know is untrue, but that's the position that they stuck on. That's not the real, that's not the honest answer, Councilman Jenkins. You heard the giggle, the laugh is about the fact that this is really about Mr. Larkin building his subdivision. It's not about any of these other things. The fact that he's not a party to the suit means he can't be a party to the settlement. That's why there is no settlement. Don't let anybody kid you. There's no settlement because he won't get what he wants.
One other thing, uh...
Look, I think, have you seen the copy of this from DOTD?
We laughed at it.
Well, you have a copy.
Totally. By the way, the person who wrote that letter is the one that you will find out tomorrow did all the hiding of all the routes.
No, I just wanted to make sure you had the document, only because I got it.
I thought it was very interesting that it just popped up today, but that's another story.
Tomorrow, I would hope that you would bring some information pertaining to, uh, the traffic situation on Flueno Lucas Road.
I will.
It's mind-boggling. It's hard for me to understand how, uh, we have an economic engine out there, the Poet. And we really have no safe way if we don't build 31-32. For the number of trucks, the size of trucks, that would be going from the port to, uh, I-49, I-20, and this is supposed to be one of the things that's supposed to, uh, create a lot of jobs.
Mr. Chairman, we're told 700 new trucks per week. And by the way, just to tell you how personal this is to me, it's really inappropriate for anybody who doesn't live in 12 Oaks, or go to St. Elizabethan Seaton during the week, or any of the other areas there, to not at least do us the courtesy of acknowledging that when people die in front of 12 Oaks, the odds are it will be us. Because they're going to die. And anybody who doubts that need only try to leave 12 Oaks in that traffic. They're going to die. And the likelihood is, it's going to be somebody that I know and/or care about. But the people who are acting like none of that matters are at no risk.
And it's hard for me to understand how a city official or city officials could not want to build 31-32. Uh, if you go to Dallas, if you go to Houston, if you go to San Antonio, uh, even, uh, Oliver, where I got a lot of cousins still in Jackson, Mississippi. They're building highways over there, because they understand this is the key to the growth of a city.
It is the only part of the city that is really growing, Mr. Chairman.
That's right. And, you know, uh, if we don't grow, we're going to be stagnant.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know how we're going to become the next great city of the South. And we, uh, not saying that, hey, look, we want to build highways and, and this is conceived back in the 50s that we needed this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll sit down or leave. But I really would like for everyone here to acknowledge and at least give me credit for the fact that all of this is pro bono work, 100%. I never would have done that if I had known what this was going to cost. But I did it. I'm still doing it. Would like everyone here to notice that as I was expressing everything that I did in answer to Councilman Jenkins, I never once named a person or cast any aspersions. And then I answered a question about the settlement, and here came the derision. With all due respect to everyone here, I know we'll see you again tomorrow, I'm going to leave at this point. And I thank you very much for the time that you've given me, and Councilman Jenkins, for your question. It is so, to me, incredible that your instinct was to ask that question, because it's right at the heart of this.
Well, just before you... Sam was a very smart young man. But the other thing, you might find out that you might have two or three people that's involved in this that, uh, own no properties in Shreveport or...
The hardest thing about this is that I was born here, I grew my business here, I reared my son here, this is my town.
That's right.
The people who are doing this damage are not from here, and that hurts me.
That's right.
It's not right, it's not fair, it never should have happened.
And then you might have one or two who might be involved in this that own no property at all.
I certainly understand that.
Pay no property taxes at all.
I know.
And that's sad.
And I didn't bring that up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. Appreciate you coming down, and we'll look for you all tomorrow, and I believe, uh, I believe that's all we have on that. Ms. Judy Smith, is Ms. Smith here?
She's here.
Ms. Judy, you want to come up, and then we have Ms. Critcher. Ms. Smith?
Chief.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Exactly right. Chairman of the MPC, would you come up and, uh, uh, make a few remarks, because I'm told that you might not be able to get here, uh, tomorrow unless we can have a police escort from Monroe.
I'll try and make it.
I don't know whether we have that kind of money. You want to give us your name and...
Yes, I'm Leah De Marto. My address is 4720 Richmond Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I am the current Chair of the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Right. Well, you know, we just, because actually, you all do a lot of volunteer work.
It's completely volunteer, yeah.
You don't get paid for it.
No, sir.
You put a lot of time and a lot of research in it.
We do.
And you try to, well, I'm going to say try, you all make your decisions based on facts, based on what you think is best for the community.
That's our mission.
Right. And we appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
And I know it can be very, very disturbing for you all to put all this time in, and then come before the City Council and it's just all thrown out. You know, I would, I know how you would feel, because if I was in your place and somebody would do me like that, I might want to say a lot of bad words, but I know that's not the Christian thing to do.
Well, we understand that's the process, so...
Right. Well, I, you know, but sometimes you can have a process that might not be right. You know, sometimes it might not be morally right. You know, I understand that. I remember once, Brother Willie Bradford, I don't know whether I was a citizen or not, I remember times when there were a lot of things that were probably right in America legally, but it was morally wrong. So just because something is legally right, it doesn't necessarily have to be the right thing to do. So I just wanted you to maybe say a few words about how you all came to the, uh, to your decision, because I think you all made the right decision.
Well, I appreciate that. Like you said, and all the Council, we, the MPC members, the Board members, most of us weren't even around when all this was happening or involved with the Metropolitan Planning Commission, which could be a good thing, it could be a bad thing, but... So we took it from the, tried to take all the facts and everything from the beginning, but honestly, our decision was based on an ordinance. It's actually a Shreveport, it's Chapter 82 from the Shreveport Code of Ordinances, Article 2, and it's related to subdivisions, which the case before us, the Larkin case before us, was related to a subdivision. So I have a copy of it, if you guys need it. But I can either read it to you or just paraphrase it for you, but it actually implies that that a property owner does not have an inherent right to subdivide property or to create building sites, except it's consistent with public health, safety, and welfare of the entire community. So at the time, with everything we looked at, and it wasn't, you know, it's a vote, it's not just me, we decided that because there are proposed routes with the feasibility studies, and anybody that comes in front of us in those proposed routes that wants to subdivide, we just think we need to look at the greater good of the community in getting 31, 32 built and to the port. So that was our, that was our final decision on the vote, was to deny the application.
Right. And again, I want to let you all know that we really appreciate the hard work that you do, because you all helped to protect this community. And this is what it's all about. It's not about trying to satisfy two or three people who might be in a position to make a profit. I'm sorry, Sam, but, and I just want to let you all know that you all do...
Thank you.
An excellent job.
Thank you. And I want to, you know, I want to say, yeah, I'm sorry.
We're trying to look it up over here, so, Section 82, Article 2, what's the...
Areas within Shreveport Metropolitan Planning Area. Division to Review and Approval Procedures.
I was going to ask Jacque if she could get that copy in Z Rock some more, and let's make sure that each Councilmember, Jacque, have a copy of that.
Thank you.
I mean, I would just like to, the MPC would like to encourage that the feasibility study or the Stage 1 study be completed, because we also don't want to hold up a landowner forever not being able to build. And I'm not sure why, and I'm not attorney, and I don't want to get into political things, but I know, and I've asked around and we researched enough, that this Stage 1 can go, it can be done. And they're worried about lawsuits and all that. You can indemnify the people that are doing these studies, so they're not in the lawsuit. So in our research, we found out it would take about maybe two years. We could have been a year or so into it by now. So, and this would show the routes that is, you know, it would show the route. They'd do the environmental impact study, they would get the route done. Maybe it's not through Larkin's property, I don't know. We don't know. It might be through some other property. We don't have a crystal ball, but until we do the study and know, then we can, you know, if it's not through his property, let him build. That'd be great. But at this point, we don't really know.
Right.
And I would encourage you guys to get NLCOG to do these studies. That's kind of how we think, but I know we're kind of low on the totem pole, so...
And it kind of seems like to me that some of the studies that NLCOG has done is kind of not being in the best position of, like you all say, of a community.
I really don't know that.
Right. Okay, yes.
Why are the studies being held up?
I mean, I...
We've heard that it was held up due to lawsuits, but I know those laws, you know, if I looked at them, I think a lot of them were dismissed. I'm not sure, I couldn't ever get a direct answer why the feasibility 1 has not gone on, it's not being done.
We'll see if we can get that answer for tomorrow.
Okay.
Kent Rogers is here.
Oh, there you are.
Kent Rogers is here, Mr. Chairman.
Who's on Northwest Kent?
Kent is in the back of the chamber.
Okay, Kent, you want to come up and answer that?
And can I just add another thing, is that you don't have to have the Stage, you can do a, I was told, and maybe Kent can tell me this too, that you can do the environmental impact study, you don't even have to have the Stage Zero in order to have the Stage 1 or an environmental impact study. So I just, as a citizen, I wish we would just get on with it, let us know where this route's going to go through, because I agree, it's very important to the port. And as a business person here, you know, you were asked about the number of trucks. We looked into that. It's 55,000 trucks per year, about 4,600 per month. And with the addition of Bentley Steel, I was told it'd be additional 1,500, I mean, 15,000. So we're looking at about 6,000 a month. And as the port grows, hopefully it will, we're going to need that. We're going to need some trucks in a safe manner to get there.
Wouldn't you say that that's a lot of trucks?
To me, it's a lot of trucks.
I'd say that. That's a lot of trucks. And wouldn't you also say that that's a lot of big trucks?
Yes.
And would you also say that although Flueno Lucas might be, what is it, five lanes now, four lanes or whatever it is, but that many trucks on that highway, wouldn't that be a dangerous, wouldn't that be a very dangerous...
You know, I don't, I don't think I'm qualified to state that. I think that's why we need the study done, and the environmental impact. I think that's why we need to get it done and get going, so we could either let the people build or subdivide and build, and buy, you know, buy their property and go on, or we get it built.
But just, but just as a citizen, and as a driver...
I would like the most safe...
Wouldn't that ever be a dangerous situation?
Yeah, I would like the most safe, direct route. I, like I said, I think somebody far more qualified than me needs to make that determination.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking you, because sometimes we get people who are qualified, and they're qualified to make the decisions the way that they want to make them.
Right.
So...
Well, I'm here speaking on the MPC, so we would just hope the feasibility study would get done.
Right.
A timely matter, and see where it's going to be, so we can let the other people know. Whoever, wherever it's going to be built, at least let them know and go on.
I guess I'm an old country boy, and sometimes people are supposed to be qualified or really not qualified. So, you know, we want to make situations safe for our citizens. And, you know, a lot of times, it just takes a little common sense. You know, sometimes when we get too qualified, then, you know, we don't really come to any kind of decision. But, you know, just looking at it from the standpoint of trying to provide situations that are safe for our citizens, it seems like that many trucks on Flueno Lucas would not be, would not be a very safe situation. Can I say a hand? Yes.
I wanted to ask, what was proposed to the MPC regarding, if I'm not mistaken, there was an option that was presented by Mr. Larkins to eliminate Unit 1, I guess with the idea... was an option that was presented by Mr. Larkins to eliminate Unit 1, I guess with the idea that, you know, I guess after the studies have been done, even if it was chosen as a route, he was even willing to make that exception, so...
And, yes, it was more than one unit, it was a line of lots in that, in this plot.
About seven, if I'm correct.
I don't recall and I don't have it in front of me, but...
About seven, and it was considered Unit 6.
Yeah, he did offer that, and we did vote, that was the first motion, and it failed, 4 to 3, I believe, if I recall correctly. And the thought on that was, is we're not, until the environmental study's done, and we're not gearing, we don't know if it's going to go right on that where he graciously allowed those not to be subdivided.
About seven lots in Unit 6.
Yeah, we just thought that it's, it was just too much. We didn't know, it could go right through the middle, it could not, we just, it all boiled down in the end is that could we, we have a responsibility to the community, and could we tell people that we're buying lots there and building multimillion dollar homes that they're fine, they're safe, they can do that, and that roadway will not go through there? I couldn't say that that's true because it is one of the routes, it is one of the preferred routes. So, we just thought as public servants that we really couldn't say, oh, yeah, we could just reserve this over here. We had to reserve, I don't know if reserved or preserved or whatever's the right word, but we just didn't think piecemealing it was the answer.
Mr. Chairman, we appreciate you coming down today and we, and if there's any way you can make it back tomorrow, we will, but I just want to let you know that you had a beautiful article in the Shreveport Times and most of us...
I'd rather just fly under the radar, honestly.
That's all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you all do a fabulous job for the city.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before you move on, Leo, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for the service that you have rendered to the city of Shreveport. I know it has not been easy. As you mentioned, you all do what you do for no compensation, so the fact that you sit through the very lengthy meetings that you all sometimes have and the fact that you have come here today doing business hours when you could otherwise be doing what it is that you do professionally is much appreciated. I also want to commend you for your service as Chair. You have led the MPC through some times that they have not had to go through, I think in some 30-plus years, I think, since they last had to go through the challenge of selecting a director. I know that there were some forces being cast upon you and your fellow commissioners that sought to somehow supplant you all's collective judgment with theirs. You all stood, stood that, moved forward, and our community will be the better forward, so...
That means a lot to me, thank you. I'm honored to serve.
It is heartfelt and you are most deserving, along with your fellow commissioners as well, so thank you.
Have a great team, thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jenkins?
In light of what the MPC Chairman said, I think it'll be interesting tomorrow also to see how do you weigh this ordinance against the recent Second Circuit cases that seem to indicate that you can't just arbitrarily deny someone, if they have a site plan or development plan that meets our requirements, you just can't arbitrarily deny them moving forward. So, I mean, I see and understand the basis of what they were acting upon, and I'm not passing judgment on any of it right now. I'm just happy to say tomorrow it'd be good to hear something from maybe the city attorneys. How do you weigh this? You know, on the one hand, I see this as a pretty blanket ordinance, but on the other hand, we got decisions that's coming from the Second Circuit that said you have to be very careful about denying a compliant site plan or development plan, you see?
You know, I...
All they weigh is in on a decision.
And we'll let the lawyers talk about that tomorrow because sometimes the Second Circuit might say one thing and a court above the Second Circuit might come right back and, you know, say something else. Generally, when it's the law, you know, you kind of, and I'm not a lawyer, but I hope won't nobody get angry with me, sometimes I kind of practice a little law.
Only on weekends now.
Oh, yeah, only on weekends, so... If we have no more questions on that subject, Mr. Thompson, Dale...
Mr. Chairman, have you gotten all of the people who wanted to speak?
I'm sorry, Ms. Quitcher.
We had those other two.
I'm sorry, Ms. Quitcher.
And then there was another one, I believe, as well.
Was it, I'm sorry, Judy, I'm sorry, Judy, Judy, please, Ms. Quitcher, please, I'm sorry. Mr. Thompson, thank you so very much here. You are so helpful.
I wanted to address...
Dale, I know he's looking for a raise.
The appeal letter from Broadmoor Baptist Church called BAC 4414. I see two other appeal letters before me, but is this the time to address it? I have a concern about it.
Well, it's not coming up today, but...
I would like to make it...
Because you're one of our most outstanding citizens here in Shreveport, we're going to let you talk.
Well, for one thing, it's not the 5,300 block, it's the 4,200 block of Klingman Drive.
What's 200 block, ma'am?
What is?
It's Appeal Letter BAC 4414. It says the 5,300 block of Klingman Drive, and there are no 5,300 blocks. It's 4,200 block, right directly behind 4110 Yuri Drive, the address of the Broadmoor Baptist Church. And there was a hearing and it was presented that they would like to build on their south side of their campus a new contemporary worship service and the community, and everybody is agreement, please do, because this building will serve the Lord and carry the gospel. They said, don't get real religious in here. But the point is, everybody agrees to build. The problem came that they wanted to pave with cement all these houses they've been buying for the last 20 years, and they wanted, and they've succeeded in pressuring and pushing and so forth, and they have acquired all the lots around my house. And in all the interviews and the newspapers, it looks like I'm opposing God. I love that church. I was baptized in that church 61 years ago. That's my church.
You don't look that old.
I am 70. I was 70 May 19th, and I'd like to get to be 80 and 90, but the stress of all this is really hard. Here's my point, y'all voted, well, not you, but the MPC and the zoning variance people. I said, what's a variance? Is it going to change me from residential to something else? Because I reside here and I want to keep on residing here. And they said it wasn't a zoning problem, but it seems like it may become one. And I just wanted to be sure that everybody who hears an appeal is privy to the original format and reads over the discussion that took place so that you don't have to rehash everything that went on. And I brought pictures and I brought things like that. But the point is, once it was voted down, another time it was voted down, and now they're back. And I'm just asking y'all to be discerning and, like you ask some people, these people don't even live here, what, they don't have a horse in the race, you know? It's up to the people who live there. Nobody lives at 4110. They come there, they meet, they worship, they go home, they live somewhere else. I live there, that's my house. I don't want to move, I don't want to sell. They said, everybody has their price. I said, does the Jew have a price for the city of Jerusalem? He's surrounded by his enemies, they've offered to push him into the Mediterranean Sea. I said, there is no price. I'm sorry, but this is not anything if it isn't a spiritual problem. And I would like to make clear that I love the people who make up Broadmoor Baptist Church, they're my friends, they're my associates, they're, some of them are my neighbors. But I'm contending that this is not about where they live, this is just about where they park. And they want to park in my front yard, and they want it all paved. And I hope y'all will remember that this is just convenience. They have unused parking places. We have pictures and people walked around and, you know, and it's gotten really emotional. I mean, I'm emotional right now. But I've already prayed over every one of you, and you're Christians and you're ethical. And I think that this will be decided according to God's will and y'all's will, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, ma'am, just quickly...
We have some questions.
No, no, just something. So, we're, one of your neighbors is having a meeting Wednesday at 6:30 that I'm coming to talk about this. Are you aware of that meeting?
No, I haven't been made known.
Okay, I know they have your information and know where you live, and they'll come by and put a letter on your note.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find...
Is it my neighbor living there or is it the...
It's one of the neighbors on, behind your house.
Finley.
On Finley, yes, I can't remember.
And it's 6 this Wednesday.
6:30 this Wednesday.
Oh, great, thank you very much. Like you talked about, people don't get information.
Well, they were trying to set up a time that enough of them could meet, and so we're kind of on early...
Are you my councilman?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, well, thank you, it's good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And you see how handsome he is, huh?
I see how handsome, and that does count.
Yeah, it does. You hit it all over.
There we go, forgive everything else and let's focus on that.
On that, let's focus on that.
And then, based on some communications with the architect, they're going to ask to postpone this for even another two weeks. So, it may be a month or so before we even get this in front of us here at the council.
And will they tell me, but I've enjoyed this. I have found this informative and it heartens me and encourages me. We have a good city, we have a great city. We're not the next great city, we're the great city. And we have Christians and we have Muslims and we have everybody, but they treat each other with respect and they honor each other. And I'm proud to come from this place and I'm proud to move about, but I don't want to move from this place.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you the address here in just a minute, but keep coming.
Where the meeting is?
Yes, ma'am, but hold on one second, I'll come, I'll talk to you out there, just...
Okay.
I don't think you've got to make it public, or...
No, 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 I'll just...
Oh, I can leave? Oh, okay.
I'll come, I'll come tell you in a minute, just a second.
Good afternoon, Mayor Glover, Chairman Shine, and City Council Members. My name is Adrienne Quitcher, 817 Ontario Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm just here to give you a little bit of new information about the Human Relations Commission ordinance that you'll be voting on tomorrow. This All Volunteer HRC, of course, as you remember, will hear grievances as a result of violations to the recently passed Shreveport Fairness Ordinance. You'll also recall that when I was here before, I told you that in conversations with Larry Bagneres, who has a 25-year history with the New Orleans HRC, that he expects that we, like they, will have 99% of our grievances resolved through mediation. Since I was here before, I have talked to retired Judge Frank Thaxton. He has 13 years of experience as a mediation attorney, and he has offered to train members of the Human Relations Commission once it's formed and to assist the commission in any way possible to make it work, since mediation is going to be so important to that commission. So, I just wanted to share that with you, I thought that was really encouraging. I just also wanted to remind you that all religious nonprofits, small businesses, and a small owner occupied housing units are exempt. And so, just like in New Orleans, I think our HRC will be a great way to unify our city, so thank you.
You do a fine job, fine job. Mr. Thompson, would it be all right if we would take your report tomorrow?
That would be fine, Mr. Shine.
I'm saying that since all of us not...
Yeah, he can't hear you.
Yeah, he can't hear me, that's why I'm saying kind of low. Any observations or comments from any of the, first of all, from the administration and then from the council?
We have none, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson, you have something else you'd like to say?
No, sir, you looked at me, you said councilmembers, I was just kind of...
Oh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming down.